President?
Yes.
However. You have a venue? Do you have a venue to do the meeting?
Possibly.
We'll call the Newport City Council meeting order from Monday, February 3rd, 2020, 6:30 PM. Our members of the council are present, others include James Johnson, Claire Treasor, and Laura Doolgan, our city manager. The first item is to approve the minutes of January 20th, 2020.
Motion made.
Is there a second to approve the minutes?
Second.
Seconded, discussion on the minutes. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. The next would be to approve the January 27th minutes. I will entertain a motion for that.
Motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded, discussion on the January 27th minutes. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. Moving on, comments by members of the public. We have Ann Shirello, diversity training and Park something.
Parks and precedence, depending upon if I get to it tonight or we'll move on to the next agenda. So, diversity training.
Firstly, I'm giving two minutes.
That's fine.
Okay.
Got it. Last time, I remembered at the very end, one councilman was practically begging that conversation be continued by this group on the Martin Luther King Day issue, declaring it a holiday. And the mayor at that point said, there was nothing left to discuss, and the city manager said to move on. And I realized then, while I had told Kevin that I thought the first step was the making of Martin Luther King a holiday in this city, really, it got beyond my confrontational persuasive powers, to say the least. And I thought, well, what do you do then? And I thought, well, diversity training, because diversity training would be useful for any one of us, and certainly for our city council members to have. And it might give you a different perspective on this issue, and it probably shouldn't be a business model, but maybe a governmental model. And I thought, well, maybe Julie would volunteer, since she's in the health department, to find a good diversity trainer that could help us out here. We even look at the video of what happened and see where we might have gotten stuck, so that we could get unstuck and move on. Because the principle is the main thing, not whether or not the unions will go along. Because I think that would follow. My grandmother used to say, where there's a will, there's a way. The second thing about that I know might get raised is, oh, well, this would cost money to bring in a diversity trainer. And I would say, the amazing thing about Laura is that she can take a budget.
I'm being the timer, so the time is up.
Okay, then it'll just continue in two weeks, thank you.
Well, thanks, thank you for what you said. And when it comes to classes like that for human services, the Career Center brought in a special teacher for all their staff to train them, so it's possible to get training through the Career Center.
That would be wonderful.
Adult program.
We have Carl King, council activities.
Thank you, Mayor. Carl King, candidate for city council here in Newport. On January 27th, you had a meeting, emergency meeting, and I and another person were here and witnessed that. Could you just tell everybody what happened in that meeting? Would you all be able to describe the activities that happened in that meeting, please?
We approved the warning. Mr. Johnson brought up loan documents. And there was a question asked, should we do it at that meeting, or should we wait until tonight's meeting? Members of the council felt that we could do it, take the vote, at that meeting. It was just to approve loan documents for the police cruiser, or lease documents, loan documents, that we already have the cruiser. It was just a formality to approve the documents. And that's exactly what happened.
You have a, was it recorded? You have a recorder?
I don't, I'm not in charge of the recordings, it's up to Mr. Johnson. He's the one in charge, he does the minutes, he does the...
I didn't know a recorder could malfunction the recorder. The mic didn't work. It happened.
But basically, the meeting was warned to approve the warning for the annual town meeting, which had to be done, because had to get the report done into the printer. And so, then he brought up about approving the documents. That's all that happened at the meeting.
Was that everything that happened at that meeting last night?
Yes.
What about after the meeting?
There's nothing to talk about, and so...
We're gonna move on.
Is that what you feel is all about to talk about, or...
There's nothing, excuse me, there's nothing, I'm not...
Nothing happened after the meeting. The meeting, once the meeting's over, the meeting is over. If something happened, then I'm unaware of it.
You are, so that's why I'm talking about it.
You know.
You knows what I'm talking about.
We're moving on. Next item is Amy Leclair, follow-up.
Good evening, I'm Amy Leclair, the life of former Fire Chief Jamie Leclair. I just wanted to make it known, the vindictiveness of the city manager Laura Doolgan. On January 20th, 2020, the council members reluctantly accepted Fire Chief Jamie Leclair's resignation, which stated his last day as Fire Chief would be January 24th, 2020. During that meeting, the council members appointed John Harlemrake as Jamie's replacement. The very next day, on January 21st, 2020, Laura Doolgan called a meeting with Mr. Harlemrake, in which she advised Mr. Harlemrake he needed to collect the cruiser keys and station keys from Fire Chief Jamie Leclair, as he was no longer the Fire Chief and was merely a consultant. Ms. Doolgan had advised Mr. Harlemrake that if Chief Leclair refused to turn over the keys, he was to advise her, and she would take care of it. Thankfully, Mr. Harlemrake did not collect the keys. Chief Leclair was not leaving on bad terms. He was a successful Fire Chief who did a lot for the city of Newport, as well as the town of Coventry. For the last 10 years, he served as your Fire Chief. A lot of his accolades were pointed out at the last council meeting. I also want to point out that on January 24th, 2020, at the close of business, Ms. Doolgan once again reached out to Mr. Harlemrake and advised him he needed to make sure Chief Leclair turned in everything that was owned by the city, that he was not to leave with anything. I'm not sure if Ms. Doolgan was insinuating anything, but I sure hope not. Perhaps Ms. Doolgan did not hear Andrew Carbine at the last council meeting, when he stated, "When you disrespect one brother in the fire department, you disrespect us all." I'd just like to know when Ms. Doolgan's vindictiveness will end, and if I will be the next one on her list, because I'm speaking out. Thank you.
I know that this was a bad situation. I blame the council, I don't blame her. When we made the motion, we should have included start date, January 24th. By us not doing that, we made the appointment effective immediately. So I think we, we as a council, have some part in the fact that it was like, okay, it's the 20th, you're done, we've appointed somebody new.
And I can appreciate that, Mr. Ross, and I do. But as it stood, his resignation was till the 24th. But I do appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on. The next item is parking ordinance amendment regarding Bayview Street. And I believe the, who wasn't here, I thought I had. Chief, would you kind of, we're moving it to the opposite side, one side of the street, moving it to the western side of, that's right. We're going from the eastern side to the both sides, we're gonna still allow parking on the westerly side of Bayview Street. Okay. Council have any questions regarding this is recommended by Ms... I didn't know about Lynette. I went to listen to Johnson.
Yeah, I spoke to her Friday, and I know this was on the agenda, I'm kind of surprised that she's not here, but she is on the side of this.
She was.
And Jennifer Hopkins is here, not to put you on the spot, Jennifer, but this was your idea. We'll see how it works, okay? At least it's a starting point. Yeah.
So this is amendment to the ordinance?
Yes.
And all the appeals and stuff pertain to that amendment, or not?
I believe it does.
Well, we're gonna get another ordinance written up, that's different from what's in the ones here.
There is one sentence added on page 2, I believe it's... It's in the packet. The easterly side of Bayview Street, number 24.
That's the only case.
That's the only change, the westerly side?
Any other questions from here? So once this is approved tonight, you have fresh money here again? Forty-five days, Mr. Johnson?
No, it goes in effect 60 days.
It goes in effect 60 days. About 44 days if somebody wishes to appeal. And that takes a petition.
Yeah, petition for 5% of voters.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I would entertain a motion regarding the amendment to section 94 of the city ordinances, to change...
So moved.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, discussion? Oh, yeah.
Have all the tenants and property owners been going by?
What I've done is, Lynette Johnson was the one that brought it to our attention. I've been speaking to her, I spoke to Adam Kip, who owns five of the buildings on that street, and I've spoken to everybody else quite there.
Any other questions? Oh, sorry, yes, I didn't say...
So I, forgive me for not remembering, but, so which side of the street has had the telephone poles that caused the problem? Are they gonna be on the side where there's no parking? Is, is that what we're doing?
Telephone poles go down the westerly side of the street.
Okay. So parking will be...
With the telephone poles.
On the telephone pole side.
So, but none on the other side?
Correct.
Okay, just to get it, it's confusing. All right, thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Then all those in favor say aye. Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor. Is this, what is the purpose for this, and what, up until this point, what side of the cars allowed, were they allowed on both sides, and now?
They were allowed on both sides, and they caused an issue where, they've been parking on both sides.
They have been parking, but they aren't allowed. You just said they were allowed to park.
No, 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 he asked the history. The history was they were parking on both sides.
Yeah, but, but the allowed parking is only on the easterly side. The westerly side you aren't supposed to park on.
And it was, it was a problem for emergency vehicles and things to get through, where people were parking on the easterly side, because of the telephone poles.
Poles on the western side.
Emergency vehicles couldn't get through, so with all the cars on the side, in line with the telephone poles, people, things should be able to get down the road.
Correct.
I'm not sure if this helps, but...
Yep, yeah, that's...
Hands help. They used to make me sit on my hands, I'll try it again.
And last information question, Mr. Mayor, is this the same, is this with the online agenda items, is it the same ordinance there, as it, as what you're looking at?
I'm assuming, I don't look at online.
I just wanted to make sure, I looked at it today, and it was, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
And that take effect immediately, or in...
No, no, it takes 60 days.
Sixty days.
You have 44 days, as he said, someone, if they want to get a petition, the 5% of the voters to appeal it.
The cities that notices to those residents, or except to the landlords, how do you notify them?
The city manager, this day, she contacted the largest landowner there, which was five apartment buildings. We have another one right here, Mrs. Johnson, who brought it up, is happy with the change. She was having the issue with, she was having the issue with trash trucks going all the way down the street to pick up her trash, that was one thing, and then she was concerned about ambulance, fire. Okay.
You can come tomorrow to sign this.
You voted, right?
I have 24 days to sign on it.
Oh, okay, I'll sign it tomorrow. Okay. The next item is the...
I don't think we voted.
Oh, did we vote on that? I don't, I got, no, we didn't, I didn't think so. Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. I didn't think we did. Next is the certificate, the 2020 Certificate of Highway Mileage. This is something we have to do every year. We have to vote to approve it. Nothing's changed, Tom, regarding the mileage, it's the same number, that's been there for years. And so, we need a motion to approve the Certificate of Highway Mileage, and then we all have to sign the document.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay. All right, moving on. The next is the coin drops for 2020. We have the proposed coin drop list. Everyone sent their letters in as per the policy, and it was compiled, and the coin drops being proposed are all from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The first one is the Veterans of Foreign Wars on May 23rd, Newport Parks and Rec, June 6th, Newport Fire Department, July 11th, American Legion Post 21, August 15th, Veterans of Foreign Wars, September 12th. Okay, the first VFW was the auxiliary, this is the post, on September 12th. The rec committee, October 10th, and DAV, November 7th. That is the list of coin drops.
Mr. Mayor, three of the letters, they had different times to sit down. For example, the rec committee, they're down, they like to run it from 9:00 to 3:00, and the disabled veterans from 9:00 to 3:00. So I just want to make sure that they're aware of the time.
The policy doesn't really, it just can't, it just can't exceed six hours. So those times would be okay for the policy. Good catch. Any questions from council members on the coin thing?
I would point out, the fire department has 7:00 to 3:00, so we may just need to clarify that that would have to be 9:00 to 3:00 on the other quest.
Yeah, I think that was where it was set up and take down, they had planned, time, I had time to tell all the members, to set up the coin drop.
Anything else, then? I will entertain a motion to approve the 2020 coin drops.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, ayes have it, motion carries. The next is the proposed 2020 parades. This is per the event policy.
It's not street closure for the time.
Street clo, yeah. Requests came in in writing. The first one would be Wednesday, May 6th, at 6:00 PM. It's the Vermont All-State Music Festival Parade. We have Bill Prue here, might want to give a little, Mr. Storings, too. The proposed route was from the church. Want to explain, that's not in our normal standard route.
So you're asking for something that's above and beyond? And you probably read the policy, I'm guessing that you did, so you know that anything above and beyond, if there's extra fees attached, is the organizer's responsibility. And we did a rough estimate tonight to try and figure out if we could keep that within the $1,000 window, and the price that we've come up with is between $1,400 and $1,600. So I want you to, what's your pleasure in proceeding? Do you want to come up with those funds? Do you want to stick to the normal route and keep it within the budget?
The normal route, the, the, the normal route, I think, is probably down Main Street, right? It's starting like, what was, you guys sent to me, it's starting over where Newport Furniture Parts, I can't remember the name of that, where Newport Furniture Parts is, and down over to Gargant Park. With that proposed route, having 20 bands set up there would be almost impossible. There could be 40 buses, and I don't know how they would possibly do that. This is the 93rd year of the festival, and they've never had to pay for a parade, so I'm not quite sure that I would be able to get the funds for that. Mr. Storings, when we did the parade in 2007, this was the exact route we used, right?
It was, that was the first time. The, um, first time I was involved was in '87, and we staged it in several little parking lots around town. In '97, it didn't matter, because it's got snowed out. On approximately May 6th, it snowed all day. And then, I had the idea to try it up at the St. Mary's Church, and Sacred Heart Parking Lot, when I saw that gigantic soccer field up there, and the, and the huge parking lot for 20 school buses or coach buses to get up and unload kids safely, and have those kids have a place to, to wait and stage themselves, you know, before they...
Have you guys had a chance to sit down with Travis, being on the lieutenant, who helps us design these parades?
I emailed him in November, but I didn't get a response yet.
You haven't heard back? So it might be who bus to have a sit-down and see how we can accommodate those 40 buses, see where we might be able to do that. Try to keep discussing.
Of course, they would be ending up at the high school, too.
Right, right. Ending at the high school buses, we just drop them off there and go park there.
Yeah. I think there, I think it would be a good idea for us to sit down and tease it out a little bit. So I would, I mean, my suggestion, given that we'd like to meet, see what we can work out, see if that's something logical, I would, if you're, if you're inclined to approve this request, to do it, and we'd probably come back with more information, so, you know, if there are additional requests, and that way you're not putting them off. I guess it's time to correct ourselves a little bit.
Can I ask how long roughly this, I mean, it's, when we started back in June, I want to say, it's, it's quite a long process.
Yeah, it is, you're the first people. Very lucky.
When you started, they were still working on...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It has been a process for us.
They were working on, fine tuning it, and that's why it took longer than it normally would have taken.
We could probably meet in the next couple of weeks. Is that good?
I would, I would think so.
Okay. Mr. Mayor. I believe it's quite an honor to be chosen to host the All-State Music Festival Parade, and it's really insulting to be told that they're gonna have to pay above and beyond. Oh, my God, I'm so sorry.
Ms. McGowan has the floor.
What's comment section?
You know. I'd like to make a motion that we waive all fees associated with that parade.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion made, seconded, discussion? Oh, okay, we're just gonna approve that one parade, great.
Correct.
For now. Okay. Discussion?
Yeah, I just, so, we're not, no one's saying that the parade can't happen, that if we approve, we're approving the list of parades, and then the city, and Bill and Peter can work out the logistics of it. So, we're not looking to say, no, you can't have a parade. A thousand dollars of it is covered part of the policy, and it sounds like, you know, we might be able to work out logistics in order to make it happen on the route that we want. It's just a matter of working, probably working that out.
And that can still happen, just with no fees. And it sounds like there needs to be some logistics discussed, and making this motion, my intention is to guarantee no fees for this parade.
I guess I'm not inclined to go against a policy that was, you know, put into place, that the council will turn.
Ms. Doolgan, the quote you just made, did that include, one time you mentioned that some of the expenses could be offset by volunteers?
That's a possibility, and if, if we could take the time to sit down and go through it, I think we could come back with something that's more optimistic than what you might be leaving here with tonight. But we don't know, because we haven't sat down with you guys yet. So that's my goal. I mean, we did approve this policy. It is, it's generous at the outset. The, the people who worked on this were very pleased with the work product, and the council unanimously approved it. So we do have a process in place, it would be nice to see if we can afford to have. I guess it's a, it's a work in progress for this one.
Did you have something?
Yeah. The policy never precluded people coming to the council and asking for their fees. It sets some guidelines, and it simplified the process.
I guess I just want to say that's, that's different than the conversation we had in the subcommittee.
Okay, well, we have motions to be discussed. Anything else? Then all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose?
I oppose.
The ayes have it, motion carries. And you will set up time to meet to coordinate logistics, to go from up there down to the high schools. Okay. The next one was the Newport Parks and Rec of the American Legion Memorial Day Parade. That's, that's the one that starts, you started, Family Dollar, right, Mr. Johnson? Now it starts in this building? Ends at Gargant Park. And that's 10:00 AM, Monday, May 25th. Any discussion on, and then the other one would be the Newport Derby Light Up the Night Parade. And that was Saturday, December 5th, 6:00 PM. And those are the other two parades I would need to approve.
I'll make the motion approve.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion?
I didn't make the light parade. I heard it was wonderful. Did that go well? Was there a lot of police coverage in intersections and stuff? It pretty much just walked away.
Around the city only, that's all we handled.
Yeah.
But she left the city, it became the sheriff, and it was the sheriff...
Where's the sheriff's department?
The other one, the memorial day, that's a co-sponsored event, right? That's City End.
Yeah, there's a reason that the city is co-sponsored.
And those follow the normal route, other than the light parade.
The light parade doesn't follow the normal route?
No, it really don't lie under the normal parade.
Anything else? Did you make a motion on that? Did I get a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, okay. All right, we have a motion, seconded, discussion on the last two parades, and all those in favor say aye. Opposed, eyes havoc, motion carries. The next item is appoint the health officer. This would be chief, Hallamark is qualified, Hallamark is qualified, ready and able to assume responsibilities.
I didn't hear willing, but.
So basically.
That's it.
That's it.
Okay.
You definitely need to be the health officer.
Awesome. While I'm here.
We have to have a motion before.
Okay.
I'll move to point, Tom is the health officer.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded discussion on the health officer. Then all those in favor say aye. Opposed, eyes havoc, motion carries.
Now I can call my first complaint back officially.
Yeah, I might have to call you.
While I'm here, as you know, every year we invite the council to a annual meeting, and Mr. Mayor, his invitation for you and the council, Mr. Johnson, for you and your staff, Ms. Holder, for you and your staff, and I'm not sure you are aware or not, but we have a gentleman celebrating his fiftieth year with the park this year. So we're trying to do it upright and show him the appreciation he deserves, so I look forward to seeing you all there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the, may I ask, what's the date and time and all that?
February fifteenth at five o'clock.
The next item is to appoint the assistant fire chiefs, and the fire chief has recommended Kevin Lacoste and James LeClaire Jr. as assistant chiefs. And this is recommendation.
I'll make the motion through. To appoint Kevin and James LeClaire Jr. as assistant chiefs.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion on that? Then all those in favor say aye. Opposed, eyes havoc, motion carries. The next item is accept resignation of a planning commission member. We received a letter from Bob Courier, who wrote a letter on January twenty-first, resigning from the planning commission. So we need a motion to accept his resignation, since we appoint a planning commission.
You think that Bob Courier's resignation, planning commission?
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Then all those in favor say aye. Opposed, eyes havoc, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, have there been a lot of planning commission members who've died in the past couple of years? I received that tip from somebody, and I don't know if there's any truth to that, or if there have been an abundance of resignations that you know of?
Only two?
Two others or Bob?
Bob and one other.
When was that resignation there?
Which one?
The other one beside Bob.
Probably three months ago.
So three months, four months?
Ten.
But there's only been two in the last couple of years.
Clark.
Oh, Clark.
And Dan.
Well, Dan because he came on the council. Dan because he came on the council, so actually there's been three. Clark Curtis, who's, I'm not, who's still, I'm getting them mixed up. Clark Curtis, Colleen Moore Diortes, and Bob Courier.
Was it past year?
Year.
Clark was longer ago than the year.
Yeah. Because Bob was chair.
Yeah. Did I give reasons why or?
I don't know about the other two. Bob's term was up in March, but he was going to try to stay through the rewrite of the plan, but he decided it was his best interest to resign. That's all he put. Okay. Move on.
I want to move, JR, second in two minutes.
Oh, is it in two minutes? Yes. Okay. Mr. Johnson, new business?
Yeah, I've got one record license so far. It's a repeat. Any new ones? I've never had trouble with the deep after review them, but I've never had any trouble with this one. This is for Jimmy Quick's store, so everybody needs to sign it on page two. I never send samples. That would be nice, but I've never got any. That's all I got. There will be more of those.
Yeah, we're getting into the season of renewals. New business, Mr. Johnson? New business? Only new business I have is the end report, it's signed for the premiere today. It is available already online from the main webpage, so the end report is done for another year. That's all I have on new business. New business, Mr. Ross? New businesses? Mr. Johnson, old business?
Yeah, I do. First, I want to thank Paul for putting everything together, I gather, he puts it all together in the board. He's the expert. Okay, old business. I've got the loan documents assigned to new police cruiser. At the Sunset Bank, for three years, the interest rate is two point one nine percent. And this was brought up last meeting, and the meeting before that, it's been on the agenda before. So just need to sign it. The check will be written directly to Hayes Ford. He can have his car labeled. I'll mention again that this is to replace the cruiser that was totaled back in August. By the time they got ready to order this one after all the insurance stuff was settled, new model will be, oh, that's why it's a twenty.
New business?
No.
None for me?
Old business? Sir Ross? New business? The next meeting date will be Monday, February tenth, two thousand and twenty, six thirty PM here in the council room. Now we need a motion to adjourn at seven ten. Motion made, is there a second? Seconded, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, eyes havoc, motion carries.